I'd like to call to order the village board meeting for March 12th. If you'll rise with me for the pleasure of it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm afraid I'm not still on the roof. All right, all right. For this time we have an invocation. Mike Patrick Fudds.
We just said one nation under God, and so we're under God's provision and blessing, as well as under His guidance, so let's seek that tonight. Your Lord, we thank you that you love your people and that you also love your people by providing government. And we thank you, Lord, for the men and women who are willing to serve as public servants for the Village of Moni. We thank you for the gifts you've given them and the opportunities that they have to serve in this way. And we pray tonight, Lord, for your blessing on them. We pray for your sense of what is just and right and fair to guide them. We pray for your wisdom as they deliberate and make decisions. We thank you for the opportunity too that citizens have to participate in governance, both in running for election, as well as for citizens to voice their thoughts in meetings such as this. And so we pray, Lord, that the events of tonight will go according to your plan, that we will be guided by your goodness, your truth, your wisdom. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
We have two of our trustees that have indicated ahead of time they're not going to make it tonight, so everybody can worry about that. Other issues that we can talk about. So roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Gray. Trustee Alston.
Present.
Trustee Horn.
Here.
Trustee Pop.
Here.
Trustee Racine for the case.
For this time we have open to the public. Agenda items only, if you'll come forward and give a brief comments. Okay, no takers. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. I know that there's one change, it was a minor correction that needed to take place, and that was on the minutes. The name, sorry. What was the line item on that?
The minutes have Pastor Shires from Trinity Church, he's actually Pastor Pedersen.
Okay. So with that amendment, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So will.
Second. Okay. It was Alston. Roll call please.
Trustee Alston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
And Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Court's report please.
Your Honor, actually, we have the WCTL lobby days, and that should be on the clerk's report. We got it as well, other reports, the officials. So, of course, I'll just decide.
Okay. We should address it this time, if you want to. I believe that's merely a matter of identifying who was intending to go to the lobby days on March 26th, I believe it was.
Under there.
Okay. Trustee Pop, right here. Okay. Trustee Horn. Okay. Trustee Gonzalez. Yeah. So.
Three.
Three.
I cannot.
Trustee Gonzalez is unable to. Based on that, I'll entertain a motion to cancel the March 26th meeting, and if we need to, we'll have a special meeting to deal with the business of the motion as needed.
Wait, I'm sorry. I will not make that meeting.
Okay.
I will make a board meeting, you have to tell.
Okay. So we'll cancel the board meeting because we're.
Whatever. Correct me if I.
Not a problem. I understand. So I'll still entertain a motion to.
I can cancel the 26th meeting of March 26th.
Okay.
I'll say that.
All right. Alston and Pop. Roll call please.
Excuse me. Trustee Alston. And Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay. Nothing further. Under the mayor's agenda, let's see if we can find the. We have a situation in which, in the past, the village hall has been used for the purposes of early voting. This is an unfunded responsibility and a privilege, I guess if you will, for us to partake and participate in the process of helping to make sure that there's adequate opportunity for voters to have a say in what goes on in selecting their officials. The process unfortunately is, like I may have indicated, is unfunded. And in the past, that has been a burden on our limited staff in front office and has become at times very overwhelming. This year, Sid Dresbeck and, you know, and his wife Betty and, I got a whole list here, led the cause to hook together the first ever volunteer election judge program for early voting. It's never been done in Will County before that I'm aware of. And I just want to make sure that everybody realizes how valuable that is, not just to the voters, but also to us as a community, a taxpayer body and all that sort of thing. So there was Sid Dresbeck, Betty Dresbeck, Susan Grove, Sally Schrader, Linda Delia, and Bill Bradley. And if I could, I'm going to have the attorney go ahead and read the resolution, if you will.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution acknowledging the leadership of Will County's first early voting volunteer judges within the Village of Moni. Whereas early voting for the upcoming primary election is underway, and whereas in recent years more and more village residents are taking advantage of the opportunity to cast their vote during the early voting session, whereas village resources in terms of labor are usually needed to help navigate a resident through the early voting process, and whereas the cost of early voting process is not reimbursed by the county, and whereas this year residents of Gulf Vista Estates have volunteered their time by offering assistance to the early voters, and whereas due to the efforts of these Gulf Vista volunteers, the village staff has more time to attend to the regular municipal duties and obligations, and whereas the Gulf Vista residents have always displayed their loyalty to the village and have volunteered their time to numerous community activities, and whereas Sid and Betty Dresbeck showed valuable leadership in coordinating with Bill Bradley, Linda Delia, Sally Schrader, and Susan Grove to pioneer Will County's first volunteer early voting election judge team, and whereas Mayor Farquhar and the board trustees are grateful to these dedicated residents of our town. Now therefore, it is resolved that Mayor Farquhar and the board trustees of the Village of Moni wish to acknowledge the unselfish efforts of the Gulf Vista residents with respect to the early voting process. Be it further resolved that the residents of Gulf Vista community have played a vital role in the village, be it further resolved that the village corporate authorities are hopeful that the relationship with the Gulf Vista residents and the village will continue to prosper as the village continues to move forward. Pass or approve this day 2014.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for that resolution. Sure.
Twenty fourteen dash three.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Okay, Gonzalez and Alston. Roll call please.
Trustee Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Alston.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. (APPLAUSE).
Can you all stand up?
Come on, stand up, stand up, stand up.
I believe we should be the ones standing up. (APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. And not to mention, they did offer a little bit extra charm in the facilities for, and there's a couple more days left, tomorrow and Friday are both available for early voting.
Did my wife come today? Did she like it?
They said it's closed.
What you vote for. What ticket did you vote for?
Anyhow. And by the way, if anybody was concerned, I just want to put everybody at rest, yes, there is a security camera in the back of the room, but I cannot see the voting booths. Just want to make sure everybody's well aware of that. Okay. Let me just address another item here, and this is the next item on the agenda, item H3, and that is the, there's a Whitley CPAs and consultants are, is a firm that we've recruited to do our audit for us. Without getting into all the details of all the methods and all that, the trustees have provided some information regarding that. Due to the fact that this is a potential bid, if you will, what you want to call it, but it's also the nature of it has to do with the sensitivity of what they're capable of doing and the methods they use, it was not put in the public packet because there were some confidential things there. But there's an opportunity for the board to consider soliciting the services of the same firm that we had do the audit to also do some more forensic, isn't a straight word, but there's methods of data survey that will allow them to identify common traits of potential issues of concern, whether something they pay twice, or whether it be methods, you know, there's various things that they look for. And I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that there was an option to do a little more thorough investigation without getting into a complete thorough whatever. And I'm not saying we need it, but I'm not saying we don't need it. I think that there's a desire to put some concerns to rest, and I'm not saying that they're merit it, I just think that, you know, sometimes the best way to deal with a concern is to, you know, look it right in the face and say, do we have a problem here? I don't think we do, but I'm going to leave that to the board to define whether they would like to see a little more robust review of the data. And I'll give you a little bit more time because I think this is important enough to decide. Look it over a little bit and see if you have any preferences. I'd like the discussion before we even consider a motion, just so.
Mr. Mayor, the items on your, or items that I'm assuming, but I don't want someone to ask the question, that were not done in a regular audit?
They were not done in a regular audit, nor are they normally done in a regular audit.
Correct. Okay. And then my next question will be for Darryl. If you, I think I saw him up.
He's hiding back there.
And that is, you know, we had the one revenue receipt that we found that was miscategorized, and we were going to do some additional work. If you come up with anything else.
Come on up, Darryl.
And that's the two, four questions. Second question, have you finished?
Still going through, through the past months. I would say that most things seem to be in order. That was after misclassification of what was, was in the bank statement versus the general ledger. But since I've been progressing through, everything seems to be pretty, pretty, pretty well put where it needs to be.
What, how far would you say you are through?
I just made it up through December, so we still got January to do and February.
And you haven't seen any other irregularities?
Small amounts. I mean, that, nothing, nothing big.
What's, what's a small amount?
We're talking about a missed $36 payment, you know, that type of thing, which, you know, it's not a material type of, type of event. Nothing as big as, you know, the statement that we saw before.
And there again, I just, just another point of discussion here, Darryl, I know you worked this over pretty thoroughly as well. This is not to, this is not the same, not to be confused with, say, a forensic audit, if you will, where you rip apart every piece of paper you can find and deal with everything to that sophistication, but this is just something that would allow us to have, I'll say another set of eyes, but actually systematic approach to reviewing things that, there's actually a database program that actually run all the numbers through just to look for probably something similar, turns the IRS and different other organizations use on a periodic basis for certain other patterns. And it's, it's not a forensic audit, it's not a complete thorough review of everything, but it is a step beyond a normal audit. And my inclination would be, this is a transition year. I would like to have as thorough of an audit review as possible, because I don't want to be haunted by something two years from now that, you know, some are we missed here, you know? And I'm not saying that there would be, but, you know, it just helps everybody feel more at ease. So, but there.
Just as a point too, I know that, you know, Darryl and I, we had conversations even over, you know, line by line items that I don't understand or the bill payments, and I think having it done this way will make your life a whole lot easier and some of the clarification that you and I have talked about for months and months now, and then probably several years ago.
Sure.
With somebody else. So I'm very glad to see this and probably make your life a whole lot easier too.
Sure. And if I, yeah, I'll entertain, Norm, if you would, he's our treasurer, if you could just come forward a little bit, Norm.
I would like to see it just to be able to put out a treasurer's report and be able to go from all set of records into the treasurer's report, just to be as thorough as we can.
Sure.
Because last year was a, this year was a trial of tribulations.
I understand.
Well, Darryl, from your perspective, I mean, we're looking at four or five thousand dollars here, is that something you think is worthwhile? Not putting you on the spot, but I am putting you on the spot.
I think it's, I think it is worthwhile, Tom. I think it'll, it'll give you another level of comfort with what the auditors have done.
Will give you another level of comfort.
It will, it will.
And Norm, I assume that you're checking your head too?
Four or five thousand is.
No. Price is reasonable.
It's cheaper than.
Yeah. (LAUGHING). Is this something that can be done on the, what do we call the other audit, the forensic audit? Can this be part of the forensic audit going forward?
Well.
Forensic audit.
We have a call, yeah, we have an action called for a forensic audit, if you will, and, and I'll just defer real quickly to Ruben. He's had a background with the state level of us. Ruben, just come forward just for a second and just give a little explanation of what, because we have a lot of our political types that like to throw the word around, the phrase forensic audits, and they have no idea the sophistication and demand that places on what I was over, and go ahead and just give a little explanation on that.
Just simply put, forensic audit simply means court approved, that you're able to provide an investigation, a financial investigation that can be presented as evidence in court law, simply.
The audits, historically, audit of a nonprofit, audit of a municipality, wherever the case may be, are limited in scope to those things that are presented to the auditors. A forensic audit is something that doesn't assume that any information provided to the person doing the investigation has been done with any level of accuracy. There has to be some additional review and scrutiny that goes beyond that, and that is a very sophisticated, time-consuming, and very costly process.
Typically, there's a complaint. It's brought forth by whatever party. It's brought forth to either the state's attorney's office or to a law enforcement body, and then once that complaint is generated, typically the department will move in with an audit team, forensic audit team.
Sure.
This could be a precursor.
It could be, it could be.
If, if this has any red flags that come out from it, then this could suggest we need to do this stuff.
Right. And I think in the eyes of the courts too, it shows who deluges by us trying to check ourselves. Right. And there again, there's, there, just, I want to calm the audience, just so you know. There's no allegations of wrongdoing. It's not unusual when you have a transition of leadership, one mayor to another, you know, new board, different things like that, it's not unusual to expect what is casually referred to as a transition audit, where there's a little more scrutiny that's involved. What we had with our audit was kind of an associated change of name to protect the innocent, I guess, but, I'm just kidding. Watched too many of those old shows, walking white ones too though. But the, the whole process there is to do a little more scrutiny on it, so we have better expectation coming on that, so.
Well, due to the nature of what I would consider a major discrepancy a couple of months ago, which may have been just clerical, but it's still a major discrepancy.
Sure.
I would certainly like to see us do this.
Okay.
And maybe this would, maybe this would come back with a nice warm feeling that this was just a oops type of thing.
And, and, and that's fine too. I, there again, I just say to the public again, there are no allegations, there's no concerns that anything, any previous administration's done anything wrong, there's nobody saying any of that. It's merely a matter of looking forward and doing the right thing, and just a matter of whether we feel comfortable spending the money necessary to, to add that extra level of scrutiny.
This is relatively small, not for.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal for the.
I'll make that.
Trustee Pop.
I'll say.
Trustee Horn. Roll call please.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Horn.
Yes.
Thank you. Next. I guess we're kind of, we're in two places. What County Government League update? There was some information that What County Government League has put out regarding legislative concerns. I believe the trustees may have received some of that. I think it's important for us to pay attention to the techmen in Springfield and Washington.
How often do these come out to the public?
Typically, when it's nearing, when, when they're anticipating going down to Springfield to meet with legislators, it's when they're in session, when they're doing their things. They're in session now, so therefore there's this process of identifying things that they're trying to put through. You've got some things you're not thorough read, or things like that, so it's time to contact your legislators and find out. When I was talking to the chief about, there's some pending legislation for, I don't think it's even on that list, pertaining, chief with the, I know we caught, jokingly caught that do nothing.
Yeah. It's, I believe, I remember, it's Senate Bill thirty-four eleven.
Something like that. Thirty-four eleven. Is that? All right.
Page four. The bill is structured so bad, if this does pass, that there'll be no minimum standard we can attribute to a police officer to evaluate them, and that we're also going to be able to evaluate them based on these fellow officers. So if I'm allowed those complaints, you know, to, like, where if you don't do anything and you don't feel like doing anything, then that's okay.
Okay. And there again, I know the chief and I talked, but there's, there's a common perspective that if you hear the word quota in the law enforcement, you assume that they are supposed to write supermative citations, but if this legislation were to pass, you run into a situation where we can't even try to use any measure of their activities. For instance, if I, if we talk to the chief and say, listen, we'd like our officers to have at least as many warnings as they have citations, just to show that we're trying to extend a good faith effort to go for compliance rather than just brute revenue, you know, and, but if you go that route and you have somebody who's heavy-handed, constantly, you know, whatever, you have no way to even monitor that as well, based on the way that would be implemented. So it's not just the public perception that quotas are evil, it's what a gracious community wants to be able to implement and say, hey, listen, let's add some reason to this, you know, it's, you know, the weather's bad, all sorts of other things are in play, or somebody slips through a stop sign because they didn't realize there was a pile of ice there, you know, things like that, there's got to be grace there. So, you know, those types of things, so.
Is there anything in this update here that those of you who are going to the lobby day have kind of earmarked and things that you want to go down?
I haven't had a chance of, if you guys want to talk about something right now, that's fine.
I'm probably going to try to talk to the fire chief about a couple of ones that are here relative to the fire reservations and some of that. There's a workers comp one here that I'm interested in. And the, actually, there's several that I think that we were looking at.
And, and have you been able to look at this? I think that you had identified it, I think it would be important for us to kind of take a look at. Okay. But I will. Okay. Oh, if you're trying to look at this.
Yeah, actually, there's one in there, I think it's in this list, that I've been looking at a couple of different things, but there's one in the list, I believe, where DeLuca, I'm sorry, State Rob DeLuca, is proposing that we actually get a higher percentage of the income tax revenue come back to the municipalities. Was it eight percent to ten percent or something like that? And obviously, we wouldn't support that, you know, so.
Just to say that's your second.
Anyhow. Any discussion regarding the legislation updates?
No, I appreciate you giving them.
We'll continue to make sure that we submit it as we receive them. Keep in mind that sometimes by the time, when there's a shell bill that gets put on in Springfield, it's not like a ordinance is where we start off with an idea for an ordinance and typically with a minor variation, from the time it gets started with a brake ordinance or something like that, other than a couple minor tweaks, it gets carried through. In Springfield, it's not quite the same. They start off with a shell bill, a whole placeholder for something, and by the time it gets voted on, the label for the bill and what it actually does could be polar opposites, with all the other things that get added in there and fluffed in there and everything else, so. That's sometimes the reason why we won't get updates from, you know, Will County or IML or different things like that, because those updates could totally change the tone of it just by, like, What County Government League actually has a lobby set up in Springfield at choice to remind the legislators of some concerns, and if they can get them to do that without us having to go down there and deal with it ourselves, then they do, you know, so that eliminates the need for that to even be in the list of concerns, so. No other considerations are for that. I'll move to the attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items for the board's consideration. The first item was tabled from the last board meeting, it's the ordinance regarding engine braking within the votes for trucks, I believe it was. I changed the one provision pursuant to the board's recommendation, I believe, to indicate that it's prohibited throughout the entire area of Moni, corporate limits, I should say. The last ordinance indicated, I believe, Moni Manhattan Road and by the truck stops, I believe it was, it's just, so now it's, it's throughout the entire corporate limits. The remaining terms have stayed the same. It does indicate that DJ has the right to post signs in there at the corporate limits to inform the motors that that type of braking is prohibited.
Sure. Two questions I have for you. Number one is, I had talked to trustee Racine, and he had, he was aware of the fact that trustee Horn and the chief were working on a comprehensive rescheduling of fees, and instead of us putting something in, we got a particular fee on it and all that, and so it seems more prudent to just table this until we can actually address that and have it all consistent, so we're not, you know, constantly tweaking those things. The other thing was, and the question was this, I know the last meeting, it came up regarding the exact wording on the signage, is it possible that the ordinance doesn't have to stipulate the exact wording, and, you know, that it generally says engine braking prohibited, but it doesn't necessarily have to mandate the exact wording? That would simplify, because let's say, for instance, IDA might allow us to have a sign out show on the ramp, and thereby whatever their wording is would have to then be consistent with ours, and that might not be the way it would be.
We can amend it, your honor, just to indicate, you know, to give DJ the authority to post signs accordingly.
So take the quotes off of the, the general phrase where it says they don't have.
Just that sign would be posted and it's up to DJ, the wording that you believe is appropriate. appropriate.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
Of the three signs that trustee Raisik picked as a, as a consideration to post, they all had the same wording of engine braking prohibited.
Fine.
So if that needs to be addressed.
I, I, I just think that for simplicity going forward, so you don't get hung up in the, in the exact wording, that way you can procure signs in the future, might be a little different or whatever, but that doesn't tie your hand behind your back or whatever, bring back to the board for revision. So, okay, so I guess we just table it. So do we need to undertake a motion to table it until, until?
Make the motion.
Well, or until the chief and trustee Horn come up with the new schedule fees to be presented.
Second.
So we got Holston and Pop? We'll just leave it on, just as a point of reference, we'll leave it on the attorney's report, and it'll just, just table it until whatever, so it's fine. All right, so that was Holston and Pop. For both of us.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Hey, Gonzalez.
Can you call my name?
No, I'm sorry. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item for the board's consideration, I believe discussions took place maybe six months ago, about a lease agreement with Singular Wireless regarding a monopole at two five nine Joe Joe South Chestnut. They would, I think the gentleman came to one of our meetings. They wanted to construct the pole at that site. The village would eventually own the pole. It would be a five-year lease. They would have the right to, I think they call it, like an antenna, to be installed in that pole. It'd be a five-year lease, the rent would be twenty-five hundred dollars per month, but the rent is abated until they get their construction cost back, which is standard. The construction on this, they figure a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So what they're asking is to put a pole at two five nine Joe Joe South Chestnut. They, they would, they go up fairly quickly, as far as I understand. They'll conduct environmental testing, that's important, obviously. They also, we also have the right, which is probably the most important element of these type of leases. They're very common near airports and because of cell phones. You also have the right, if the board wants to, is to install other communication facilities on top of that pole, as long as you do not interfere with their antenna. So it's, it's up for the board. It's a, it's a five-year lease. The cost for them to put that pole up is roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're in negotiations with a different entity in a different area, and the cost is substantially more than this, so it seems reasonable. And again, it's a five-year lease. They'll have, their insurance will have ours, but they'll have to do their environmental test to make sure environmentally that the ground is good and the ground will support that pole. I forgot how high it will go up, but I know they've had discussions with staff probably five or six months ago, and they're asking us where we stand on that.
What side for the water tower next to there?
Little west.
So is that going to be high enough then to clear the water tower for transmission issues?
According to the ASMEs, that they were requesting. In the preliminary location.
And ultimately, we are going to lose that water tower eventually. Well, depends on which way the winds blow. That being said, you've reviewed this thoroughly, and you're kind of level of worry that's acceptable and all.
If I may, Your Honor, done some of these before, and whether it be ATNT or Wireless Communication, they don't change the wording out much. They, they bent on this quite a bit. There's a lot of protections in there for the village. The rent's about the same. I've seen rent, you know, fifteen hundred, I've seen rent for thirty-five hundred. All depends on where you go here. The closer you are to a large area, the more business they have. I've seen holds with six of those antennas on there. So this is a really standard form lease. The most important thing from our aspect is that they'll do their own environmental. We don't guarantee anything. They have to do their boring test, and if we can solicit other customers to use that pole, that's where the village will recover costs.
And we also benefit because some of our communications are going here as well.
Attorney, I do have one question on reviewing this. I didn't see any provision for maintenance of paint and so on and so forth. If that wasn't in the standard agreement, and I know that can be quite costly, we'd have to renew that equipment if it comes to village.
I, I believe, and there again, I get to review this again on one part of that now, but I believe the discussion was supposed, it was supposed to have been, oh, no, it was supposed to have been a, like a metallic.
Right.
Something that wouldn't have even had an issue with paint at all.
That's what I want to make sure. I hadn't seen the final instructions, my head went through. And if it was a painted pole, because it didn't say that.
Because I don't think we want a painted.
In preliminary.
Correct.
If they can get away with a fiber painted pole, a aluminum pole, I don't know how that affects the arrays and the antennas having a metal lined pole.
I, I remember the discussions that went into this, and it was not supposed to be a painted pole, it's supposed to have been one that would not have required that maintenance. So based on that stipulation, do we have the, you know, I guess we undertake a motion of the board to accept the lease agreement with the stipulation that we ensure that the conditions are there?
Just, just page nine, if you will, potentially unstoppable for the expensive removal of installation of any equipment attached to the monopole structure for the purpose of maintenance of the monopole. What's that?
That means if somebody, let's say Sprint wants to go on that same tower, then they're fully responsible if there's repair or maintenance of the tower. Sprint would then have to deal with their own cost of removing it in time maintenance had to happen to the tower.
Landlord should be responsible for all maintenance of heat and repair to the monopole structure. And you could do the landlord.
Ultimately, it would be us.
That's what my concern is.
Well, if we're going to be the owner of it, then, but until such time as it's, we don't actually, or we actually own it until such time as, until they pay out, you know, it's a reverse mortgage basically.
We'll, we'll own it, DJ and Mayor, probably within seven years. There's a bill of sale on here, and the bill of sale will convey that over to us. And the young one right now is Crown Castle, and they're very specific as to who can touch that. Even if you want to make repairs, you got to get corporate approval, because you could, not you, but whoever makes the repairs could jeopardize their of the children. So they're very careful in that.
And this is one of the difficult points, our guidewares.
We don't know, I mean, no, it's not, I have a guidewire system for the preliminary plans.
Right.
But because we own it in seven years, typically paints are constructed right now in the last seven years.
Right.
And you eventually have to maintain them. If you take that equipment out to paint said pole.
So we want to make sure that.
Would be our responsibility, the way this is drafted.
Okay, so there again, stipulation would be that, it, it, with the superintendent's review, I recommend that those that, that stipulate that there be a low maintenance option, where it's not a painted option, you know, service, but something that would not require the, that would require maintenance long-term. So if there's a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
More questions? Discussion?
Discussion.
All right, so we got.
Paint is just this paint. I, what about the structure itself? I understand they're telling us it's going to be there a hundred years from now. That was pretty much, I remember part of the discussion too, Mayor. And I was under the understanding that they maintained it, but we're saying that was seven years.
Well, if it's, if it's owned by us in about roughly seven years, then they're not going to be, they're not going to have any basis to, to need to maintain it, unless we stipulate the maintenance of the, of the, but they, they're not going to care about how it looks as long as we see a service up for their equipment. So we're the ones that are more concerned about the aesthetics of it, just like, you know, other.
What's all this, they call?
I'm going to repeat.
There was a couple options thrown around during our, one area we were using, one there we would find, we had those twenty poles to the. It's about the equivalent of a water tower that's on there now, and we're doing this to give the equipment off that power so when it's time to retire that power on the system, we're still generating revenue on cell sites that are on there, and we have a pole in place that was paid for.
And this pole is basically what I own, I've got up like a cylinder one or a cement or whatever, and they're not going to get any money if it falls down either, so.
They're built pretty good, from the foundation's facts of how it was put out.
Yeah, I agree with that.
At that point, I mean, there's a lot of things we can do. I'm saying if you'd like to use our pole, we build that cost.
Sure, sure. And we currently have contracts with people that are in the water tower. And at such time as we start to see those contracts become close to expiring and our ability to actually utilize this, then we, we adjust if there's an additional cost to put on this pole as compared to the previous tower. If the tower comes down and we still have the contracts on the old tower, we're going to have to deal with those.
Well, it's a bit extreme making that statement, but I'm just wondering if we know that that's a normal contract. I mean, these poles are everywhere, you know, there's thousands, a million of them. Is it safe to say this is?
I, I just, I'm involved one right now with a different entity called Crown Castle. They're very, almost the exact same unit. Rent's, our rent's a little lower, but the other facility is right next to Midway Airport. And you probably have eight of those, I call them antennas, on there, where they're going to use your cell phones and they get off the airport. And you hear a beeping, beeping, but, no, it's, it's very, very standard. We're doing one right now, where we're asking them to give us free internet facilities off the antenna. It's amazing what they can do. And they totally say, well, but they got to go up two hundred twenty-five feet. But it's, it's very standard. It's almost identical wording.
And this is going to give people, the builders on Moni, so your service, a lot of them aren't given right now.
Yes.
I think we can get advantage of that.
Well, especially.
Trying to get on Sprint, for example, which I'm, very difficult to do in Moni.
Well, that won't correct the Sprint issue at this time.
Yeah.
It'll correct the ATNT issue at this time.
Right. But to put your, my knees, it's on the, the agreement with Sprint, they are updating their equipment that are permanent on that tower, so maybe that's part of it.
You got to have a tower for all of them.
Well, and I believe we have quite a few of them on the various towers, two, right.
Let me just say, I immediately need to hang it up there. Glad David's up. Mr. Horn, I'm going to second for discussion.
We can have discussion. You know, trustee Pop, we can have discussion. It's only one. All right. Coller City, roll call at this point, I guess. No, I'm undertaking, I'm just, just asking.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item was, I believe the board, the last meeting, authorized myself to draft a letter on behalf of Mr. Mostert pertaining to their property on Main Street. They're attempting to refinance their mortgage. The mortgage company had a couple of questions relative to zoning. I drafted a letter for the board's review and consideration. I have not sent this out to the mortgage company yet until the board gave me the marching orders. Basically, as you can tell in the first paragraph, it sort of preambles. The second paragraph is indicating that we will agree that it is a valid non-conforming use subject to the following conditions. One, the non-conforming use will not be deemed permanent. It shall terminate upon the mortgage being paid in full, but in no event for more than fifteen years. I believe Mr. and Mrs. Mostert said that it would be a fifteen-year mortgage. And number two, in the event of a sale of the subject property, non-conforming use would be terminated. If the board thought this would be appropriate, we can then send it there to Premium Mortgage Company up in Rapid City, and hopefully the mortgage company will find the same to be acceptable.
And there again, I just, I know we've talked about this, but we've got a couple of our trustees that were on the planning and zoning commission, so you understand this, but just so the general public is aware of this as well. We want to be careful about variances that carry through regardless of who the property owner is, especially if you have a commercial area, and you're saying it's okay to have residential there, because ultimately, according to the comprehensive map, this is supposed to be commercial. And if you perpetuate something that's an exception to the rule, then you're really basically ignoring what the comprehensive plan says for the long-term goals. Are we there yet? No. I mean, our comprehensive plan's probably been pushed back a few years in some areas, but that doesn't mean that we should constantly look to put little holes in the middle of that. So if somebody's trying to do commercial development, now they have to deal with the issue of a residential that's really not the right suit for that. So this is a way to buy some time, acknowledge current usage without rezoning it through a permanent variance or anything of that sort, also just expedite the process to simplify it. I'll undertake a motion to approve the attorney sending a letter of this form.
Yes, sir.
To the mortgage company.
Please.
Okay. Holston and Gonzalez?
Question I have, and I see Mr. Mostert is here tonight, does this, and this is, excuse me.
Hiding, hiding, oh.
Not hiding. But does this meet the requirements, do you feel? You'll be all right with this?
It seems to work.
Should work.
If I may, it should. I haven't talked to mortgage company, obviously, but if your mortgage for fifteen years, that's all they're concerned about, so you don't have to come back to rezoning.
It handcuffs us in the fact that it stays at the time of sale.
But that would be the case anyhow.
But it doesn't prohibit your potential buyer from coming in and addressing the board at the same time. So if you sell it ten years from now, you can just say, subject to the buyer, strike that, subject to your purchaser coming in, asking for some type of zoning relief. So it doesn't prohibit that.
It suits our purposes for now, and we don't have plans to sell it at this point.
Okay.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The last item I have is that it has some discussions with Graylar regarding the installation of a water line. Graylar, with the help of the mayor, Ruben, DJ, have submitted a letter for the board's consideration. If the board recalls, they were trying to install a water line out to their facility. We're asking some help from them in response from a financial standpoint. They submitted a letter back to us indicating they believe bank interest is due knowing. The, again, the mayor, DJ, and Ruben were in negotiations, and they came back with a proposed, I won't say settlement, but an offer to the board for consideration. I don't have the letter with me, but basically what it was, in two thousand fourteen, they would not reimburse the village. They would start reimbursing in two thousand fifteen, I believe, in two thousand sixteen. The total cost of reimbursing would be roughly twenty-four thousand dollars. Also, that the work would be done by end of this year, two thousand fourteen. The tap-on fee, I believe, was an issue, but other than that, they were amenable to working with the village and already get water out there. That water, hopefully, will spur all the development out there. But we indicated to Mr. Graham and Mr. Larson, this would be brought up before the board for review.
Mayor, it wasn't exactly my head.
That's fine. All right. If you guys want, I know we got, we weren't trying to go this long because the fire chief has expected certain information from us, and that would matter as well. Simply put, there were some discussions that had been had between the property owner, previously with our administrator, which was very similar to what we had discussed at the last meeting. There was some concern for the property owner because of the sheer cost on the upfront for them to be able to deploy the suppression connectivity, all that kind of thing. The, when we met with the property owners, the partners, and their developer consultant, Don Pealman, he said to say hi to you. Don Peelman, he said to say hi to him. They came back with a suggestion similar to what we had had. We found a dispute that they're willing to pay the $24,000. It's just a matter of can we afford them a little bit of time to contend with that? And the issue comes down to, are we okay with allowing them to have the first payment of $6,000 out of the 24 in 2015, not 2014? Give them a year because of all the other front-end costs that they're going to incur. The second, $6,000 in 2016, and the remaining $12,000, they have, because of their development agreement, they're entitled to interest that accrues annually based on their, to eligible expenses that have not been met. The remaining $12,000 would come off the top of the interest payout, that would be at the very end of all of it. So ultimately, the Tiff District would still receive the offset of the $24,000. It's just a matter of can we give them a little slack in the front end so they can get this project done, make the fire department happy, be able, you know, facilitating their occupants the way they'd like to, to keep their businesses being viable.
The money's coming in and out of Tiff District, right?
It is. Yes, the whole, the whole project we already determined was, the determination was going to be, and this is the motion I'll ultimate look for, but before we get to that motion, I want to address one other thing. The last discussion we had with them, they were hoping that we were going to include the cost of the tap-in fees, which could be DJ, $7,000, $8,000, maybe in that range, between the two, multiple taps.
Water line, 116.
Okay. Well, they had multiple taps that they were going to do because the fire was.
A wired tap is separate from a water service tap, they can have two separate taps.
So the, they were, in every letter they wrote to us, they were hoping that they could convince us to include the tap-in fees. And I reminded them that the reason why we went from the 30 to the 24, not, I mean, the administrator had had those discussions with, because it was either going to be 30 without the tap-in fees, or it was going to be 24 with. So they're the ones that had kind of led that direction at the time, so then they're asking for it again. And so my recommendation would be that we would improve this, with the exception of the tap-in fees not being waived, nor there being any recapture fees, which is also the road. Because with us absorbing the front-end costs, you know, and I don't see the relevance for them to have a recapture fee and any of the tap-ins on the way. That would be my recommendation. But in the form of a motion, what I'd be looking for would be, I mean, would be to accept the conditions of the $24,000 to be paid by Graylar to offset our costs that are, the rest of the remaining costs being, coming out of the Tiff District funds, which I believe is three. And the payment amount of $6,000 for the 2015 tax year, $6,000 for the 2016 tax year. $12,000 would be deducted then from the interest payout at the end of the entire season of that. And, but there would not be a waiver of any tap-in, and they would not have future recapture rates.
We're going to.
Yeah, they would have that. So it's just, we're getting service out there, and we're going to benefit because we're both going to continue to be viable. And that, that's consistent, I believe, frankly, the discussions we had with them, they were just asking for extra. So. If you guys want to read this, I'll add, someone made a copy that I can distribute it.
There is one question too, because you said the words, the tap-in provision was an issue. If we make the provisions or the stipulations like Mayor has stated, do you think that they jeopardize them not accepting?
I'll take that back to DJ and Ruben, everyone's actually had the intensity.
There was a concern with the provision of tap-in fees. If that is the concern, I guess with the provision, then.
I think they either have to accept the conditions as stated, or they have to come back to the board for reconsideration, because that was the discussion that was defined at the meeting, when they accepted it, when they're sitting there. The letter was not consistent with the discussion.
Yeah, what they said and what the letter was, these two different things, so I guess we should.
Was that, was that meeting recorded? Because it, was it?
Where are you, you were, you were.
Yeah, I was over the phone, but that meeting, I don't believe was recorded. I mean.
But the way you all remembered it was different?
Yeah, they changed a few of the.
And that's what we need to work on.
And if I may, before I forget, as the mayor indicated, that $6,000 of payments is coming out of their Tiff note. So we pay them hypothetically $20,000 per year, or then they deduct the $6,000. So we won't be getting a check per se, but it's coming out of their Tiff payout, just like we do every year, but this time it'll be less $6,000.
We discussed that in the last meeting.
Right.
Okay. So it's, it's a guaranteed payment to us, but it's coming out of the proceeds, as long as they pay their taxes too, by the way.
Right. This is all consistent with the provisions, isn't it?
So between the three of you, you don't think, you know, this, you know, if we make those stipulations, we're in jeopardy of them not accepting?
Well, it's, Ruben, you go.
If I could just, on one point, I know you don't, I don't know if you had it in front of you, but number two was the issue. It was the tap-in fee is the issue. And part of it was we needed more clarification. Chief Nealon was not able to be there. We needed direction about the size of the main. One thing we didn't talk about is, is the lines will be open, so that's going to be the time for the tap-in fees, so we would lessen the cost. It wouldn't be as expensive as just them tapping in after we're done. So there's a few things we still have to work out and clarify, but definitely, we do have a different stance from the meeting and into this letter that was presented. So we're on two different pages, so we have to, we have to clarify that.
I don't blame them for asking, I do the same thing.
Yeah. But. The revision that we had, or we should do this more, the water main is going to proceed.
Can we then do that, you know, specify that, and then with the further conversations as the tap-in fees and provisions are?
Trustee Gonzalez, if you do that, then the climate of negotiations is now to become public, and you might as well just tell them you'll give them that for free, or whatever the conditions would be. You either go with what you have as your current point, or you just tell the entire public to get a hold of Graylar and tell them that the villagers want to concede just about anything they want. I'm not saying that is extreme, but we can't play or book that open on a negotiation.
I would say this.
Well, then just call them and tell them you're going to have that with them. But I'm entertaining a motion right now to accept it without those provisions.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Trustee, or I'm sorry, DJ.
I can turn it to something, same consideration, during that meeting.
No, as I say, I was saying the fifth, I was. No, I think it's.
You were a part of the original negotiation process.
Yeah. I, like Ruben was referring to, it wasn't open and shut, put it this way. I believe there might, as the mayor indicated, they might have some concerns about it. Their counsel wasn't present, but I think they want to get it resolved. I know there's some time constraints on them along with us, but it was, you know, you give it the best shot, see what happens, and that's what they did. But I want to go on to myself, I believe they might have some, some concerns about it.
I'm just not inclined to.
The point of order, we haven't seconded it yet, I'll second it, so we can.
Fine. So we have Moore and Holston. And just to clarify, I'm not inclined to give away more, another $12,000 or $11,000, whatever it is, extra than what was even originally presented and verbally consented to, to an extent. Because there are raw costs for us, and there's other things we'd like to do with some of that, and they do have other provisions that interest that they're accruing and everything else. I just want to make sure that we realize that.
What, what is the village getting out of this? Realize what they're getting, and realize what the fire department's getting, but what is the village getting out of this?
More village worth with a new water main?
Pardon?
More village worth with a new water main can help improve our destiny.
We're getting closer, the benefit that we do have is we're getting closer to a loop connection with development along Sunrise, Cleveland, that area there that is not yet connected. So we, it is helping us long-term.
For Sprint for only?
No, 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 for one.
Fire suppression.
Fire suppression.
Well, water service.
All one.
Okay. But, but what we don't have is, we don't have any, we don't have any sense of urgency to do it, because we don't have any other development demands that are being placed on that, to put that in place. So what's moving us forward is the need of one of the businesses that's being pushed on this, and we're trying to work with them to find a mutually beneficial, without us absorbing everything. So.
We can bring that warehouse facility out, it'll be right across the street from their last, and we'll, and we'll require suppression system, somebody will need to tap on, and we can recruit more of that.
I understand, but.
But for the buildings.
So one, two ways here, you could either, you know, if they're the ones in a hurry, then we need to make an agreement tonight in the month. And if, on the other hand, we want to wait until the attorney and Ruben and DJ have finished negotiating, then we can wait.
Well, I think we, I think we have. I think it's just that they're trying to throw a little extra one in there, because even Don, at the last minute, said, oh, so you, so you're not going to deduct the $12,000 off of our interest that they had either. He was just, it's, it's a negotiation technique, I don't blame them for trying. We have a first and a second. Any more discussion? Rock Hall, please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and our officials report, I know we got a few items on here, I do want to turn to Ruben, you got a couple here, I haven't said something.
Just one, when I, is, just wanted to make a special thank you and acknowledgement to Mooney Fire District in providing first aid training to the village, employees, officials, and a special thank you to Lieutenant Kathy Meyer, who conducted four, four training sessions for us. And I know that's part of, of your vision is provide safety, one of the things that we could probably say that 99% of us are trained in first aid CPR, AED certified. Everybody in here should feel safe, but I just wanted to recognize them. That's all I've gotten at this point, Chief.
I'll just make a brief report that we did the pole plunge, it was successful, it was cold. We had a lot of support out there, Mayor Farquhar, Ruben, former mayors, Trustee Gonzalez, many, many people came out to support the plunge team. We raised around $300,000 for that particular event, and for us doing it for the first time, we got a few kudos for you to get up that high, we were in the top 10 of the, the most raising money. Our next step is to be going to do the tip account. So if you're interested in supporting Special Olympics and our Special Olympians, and you want to help us out, on April 16th, at 11:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night at Chief's Restaurant, the officers will serve you your chow, and we would simply ask that you return them a tip, a gratuity of sorts, for the charity, not for them. And, you know, we hope you'd be as generous as possible. And again, this is for a worthy cause, and our ladies and gents are going to be out there making sure your hamburger is warm and gets to you.
What's the date?
April 16th, and it'll be from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM at Chief's. And I just like a cup tip, and it's really a cup tip. Kind of. No difference. Okay, and that's all I have.
And, like, so he is.
DJ?
Good evening, Lord. Mayor. As you know, weather is back upon us again with the snow, we can't get enough of it, so we brought it back for today. It's been a long winter, we're ready for it to be over. In between the rain and the snow and the melting, we've done some roadside patching. I know there's been a lot of concerns with Egyptian Trail falling apart. Mother Nature's not been very kind to our roads this year, so a plan is being developed for repairing of these roads. And when I have more information, I'll present it at that time, but I've met with engineers on that aspect. In reference to Egyptian Trail, there's a meeting scheduled to figure out where to ramp at that phase, and I'll report that only at that time. So my crews are out there right now, not now, but when weather permits, patching what we can. We've gone through roughly six to eight tons of cold patch that we stockpile at the end of the season when our local vendor, Iroquois Paving, shuts the plant down, and we stockpile that. That was the most that we've ever stockpiled, so there was kind of an anticipation that we might have a bad season, but we thought we would have enough to last the season, and we've already gone through that with the amount of traffic that's on Egyptian Trail. There's been numerous traffic studies done in-house and professionally. There's not a shortage of traffic ever going down that road, and when you mix frozen ice, water, heating, patch piles, it just makes a mess, and the patch doesn't stay long, so it's kind of a waste, but we have to try to protect what we can. And that road was never really designed to have that kind of traffic on it right now. That's why we have the need to redo it and resurface it. So that's still in play, it's still going forward, but in between all the weather events that we've had, we'll keep fixing what we can, roads what we can. We know most of the roads that we have issues with, and residents have concerns, you know, they can leave a message, but we don't have a potpourri program for replacement tires, so we get them fixed as fast as we can, please, for most of the people that travel that road, they know it's bad. We actually, Public Works actually did a test. We were sitting at the light at Court Street in Route 50, one went straight, one hooked to right, and we met each other at the light. It just depends on who catches the light first, right there at that intersection of Egyptian Trail and Mooney Manhattan, who gets in front of who. You don't save any more time going down that road, you just beat up your car more. So take the Route 50, the Mooney Manhattan turn, and you'll still get there safe. So if you can avoid running that road due to what you think might damage your vehicle, then please do so. You're really not shaving off any more time on your team, you're just kind of saving your suspension. So other than that, we'll stay on top of patching what we can patch. We just received about 20 tons of new patch called the UPM product that the state uses, more of an industrial product that we're trying, and with, again, weather permitting, we'll get out there and we'll start repatching. So we do have patch. I ran out, we ran out, we subsidized that with stone. There's a big difference in cost between patch and stone, but we had to fill the holes knowing that they would heat the next day. And now that we have patch, we're removing the stone, we're putting a patch in when the weather permits, and we're working on it. Other than that, between patching and plowing.
Water mains?
Water main breaks, we've had numerous already this year, and you brought it up, so I'll see you tonight if that happens. So I try to bring that up, it's kind of a bad tap-in. We've had many this year, and we haven't begun our thaw yet, so we'll trust those as they come.
I know you briefly touched on it, but I had someone reach out to me asking, why would we put gravel and pot on? I know we've had a discussion, but just so everybody's aware, when we run out of patches and the yard's closed because of, they're doing some construction over.
It typically closes in the wintertime of the season, we get it from the wintertime.
Right, so we ran out of patch, the regular patch we were using, even though we bought more than normal. And it's better to put gravel in there that doesn't cost a whole lot considering than to leave it just as a hole. And so as much as people say, well, I've never seen another town do that, well, there's probably a lot of things other towns are doing this year that I've never.
They have been patched them from what I see when they travel to other towns. And I'm very cognizant of what other municipalities are doing, and there's a lot of holes out there that they just don't.
I really have something to do with melting, so thank you.
We have the means to get the stone out of there with our getter truck, we can remove that debris, so it's very easy for us to remove that. It was a stopgap measure at $16 per ton for stone versus $100. It was a stopgap measure at $16 per ton for stone versus $100 a ton for patch or $120 a ton for this UPM product. That's more of an industrial grade, so to stopgap because we ran out in mid-January of the patch, we use the stone.
Appreciate your hard work. Jay? Horn, do you have anything?
Today, the mayor and I attended a ICSC conference down at UAC, which was very, very informative. We spent the whole day with retailers, economic people that are well-versed in economic development, came back with a lot of good points, a lot of great networking down there, a lot of people that had a lot of information to give us on moving forward in our plans for a new comprehensive plan and how to move our village forward. So that was, that was just an excellent day today, well-spent with lots of information. The village website, we're moving along, still collecting information on text that we want on all the different pages and setups, so just, you know, it's a time-consuming project to make sure that it's done right.
I'll just say one thing, I am the net on this one. Couple months ago, when Justin was here, I asked for one line to be put on our old website until the new one is up, you know, under construction or coming soon. And we'd really like to see that on there, so people understand that we are trying to do something right. Thanks for your time.
Can Darryl have a second? All right. To the trustees, trustee Pop?
I'm happy to say on the, on the water rate and deposit reduction, we're moving along. Moving along, moving forward. Thank you very much. I know with a couple of our officials.
All right, thank you so much. Trustee Horn?
We also are moving along. We have a report in April.
Trustee Raisick's up here. And number four, landlord rental licensing discussion.
I bet that.
Sure.
A couple of things, you know, after the last meeting, I asked administrator, assistant administrator, Ray to help me get some information. I provided that to you in the packet from two villages as well as a park force is working on. We are moving along on this. I think we want to continue to develop and work toward a policy. Most villages now do have a rental policy, recognizing that. We want to work with landlords, recognizing, we said last month, there in some cases, there's a California company out here buying Mooney property and just spending it around on rent and renovating that area. But we also have people who are residents of Mooney or live in the area that buy property for rental purposes, which is fine, but we need to have a policy because there's a number of things that can be detrimental. We have had citizens in the Mooney area contact members of the trustees, including myself, with concerns, reached out to them and asked them to meet in the future to come up with further information. But as a starting point, I thought it would be interesting to see what Orland Park, Tenley Park and Park Floors have on that, and that's what you have in your packet tonight. So that would be number one. Not on the agenda, but we did talk about economic development last time. I also reached out to Barbara last month on that and she's putting some information together for me of that. And I've got some other sources we're working on, so probably in the April meeting, I'll have an update on economic development. Lastly, not the least, we discussed last month the budgets for next year. We should be working on that. I'm assuming staff is working on that. I gave each of the trustees tonight a copy of the document that I got. Thank you to Perk Hazer for this one, the estimated state share of municipal revenue for fiscal 2015. I gave that to Darryl a couple days ago. He's reviewed it. I believe he's in agreement that this will make a good starting point for the revenue planning for next year as this is applied by this association and in terms of what they're forecasting. This is provided by the Illinois Municipal League and this is their forecast for 2015, so it'd be a good starting point for our budgeting process for revenue for 2015. Makes it pretty straightforward, Darryl, right?
Yep, it is.
And then ideally, the departments are working on their expense budgets and we probably should plan, we'll probably make up the meeting we're going to miss this month in April, have a budget meeting, a special budget meeting.
More likely than not.
I would suggest that we're probably going to want to do that in a back-of-our-minds plan on a meeting, a special board meeting in April just to discuss budgets.
It depends on the depth of the discussion. We may have to have it on a, I don't know, we'll figure it out.
I'd like to go in depth.
I know you do. I know you do. And as the departments are getting closer to where they need to be and their, their expectations, you know, I don't believe that the departments are completely ready for that yet, but as they are, we need to hone in on that as soon as possible and Darryl's been working on a lot of things. It'll be there.
Yeah, I'd like to see the February budget if you will put out as before, since we're not going to meet on March 26th. Darryl, as soon as you have that information, you can forward it to us so we can have a look at where our expenses are.
Sure.
Pretty well, at that point, we're looking at 10 months of the year being gone. We can probably forecast what the rest of the year is going to look like. And with the revenue that we should be able to generate here, begin to put together some ideas and begin to put the brakes on DJ and see what we're watching for. All talk, thank you.
I think he didn't want you to follow the street.
I'm pretty sure he just lost that for.
I do want to bring something up that wasn't on the agenda. I met last Saturday with Senator Kirk, US Senator Kirk, and with a few other mayors and we had a roundtable discussion on some things that were going on in the area and things that were concerned. One of the things I did present to him was the fact that we have had limitations on our ability to accomplish certain expectations for driving business to our community because they drive past our community instead of recognizing what we have in our community sometimes because there is a federal legislation in 1965 that was implemented at the request of Lady Bird Johnson, Beautification, Highway Beautification Act, and that has hindered a lot of communities, the ability to promote businesses within our community by means of billboards, et cetera. One of the things I presented to the senator was we are experiencing a form of blight, if you will, because people will drive past our towns and go to Indiana, go to other areas, and we need to have the means by which, we don't have IDOT telling us we can't do something because it'll interfere with federal funding. And I'm really asking that the federal legislature would concede to municipalities, local units of government, to have some say over what they want to allow to have for controlled highway signage within their own boundaries. And that would be a huge step in the right direction for allowing us to afford a some provision in that regard. He was very interested in that and talked to a couple of the staffers after the meeting quite in length. Yeah, that's what I'm good at, I guess. Anyhow, it looks like they will, they will attempt to make some progress in that regard. Anyhow, so I just want to touch base on that. The other thing was, we have made some progress regarding signage again, and that is, we have more restaurants in Mooney than IDOT is willing to concede to letting us have blue signs, directional signage off of the expressway to drive in here. With the, with Culvers being a new nationally-known chain, they have been limited in their ability to have signage so that people know they're here. We have other restaurants and such that we'd probably like to have some visibility, but they've not been able to have that option either. Through the support of State Rep. DeLuca and his office staff, contacting Legislative Affairs Coordinator for IDOT, and then ultimately directing IDOT District 1 to allow us to now have a, an additional sign on the northbound to give us an additional blue signs that the restaurants connections post on that wall. Apparently, we're only, we only have six of our restaurants that are advertised on there. Now we'll have seven to 12 as a consideration. They have, I've talked to any of the restaurants that are not on there, they have 45 days from the time they receive the notice to, to reply and indicate they're interested in doing that, or else the whole issue goes away. So I know Culvers is interested in doing that and that'll be a good placeholder for that, but again, with others. So, they, that's only on the northbound side because IDOT has put in a new interchange at Stumpford Road. It's not completely done yet. Some of our southbound signage is actually north of the Stumpford Road interchange and they haven't quite figured out yet how they're going to deal with the southbound signage. So, at least they're accommodating us halfway, which is a step in the right direction. So, I, that's a, I know that's something that was one of my projects as a trustee. I've tried to see happen with government. It doesn't happen fast, you know, but it does happen. So, you know, I, you know, thank you to Anthony DeLuca's office and then, you know, just helping the local businesses get what they need, more visibility, so. Anything on the new business?
Can I bring up just a couple things? I guess there's no own business on here, but I wanted to talk about truly. First of all, Darryl, I know we talked about some of those, those financial policies and doing, or approving the checkup before they actually go out. Are you hoping to get this in and the policies done for our new budget year then and not to worry about it until then?
Well, yeah, I wanted to get all the policies together and we're going to the, to the new fiscal year, that they all be in place and then we can start at that point going forward with that. I guess it's more of a timing issue with putting, putting bills out there. It has to be a cycle net where I can present those basically a month in advance, you know, before they're due to get approval, so it's a timing issue.
Are you hopeful?
I'm sorry?
Are you hopeful?
I am, I am. It, it's just, you know, most bills are due by the 30th, so basically, when I receive them, there's 14, 15 days, but I'm, in the last packet that I sent you all, I did put in, you know, a coming due list of bills that were coming due. I don't know how many of you all looked at it, but that's probably where we're heading, try and get more of those in that, in that listing of bills due.
And then I think having, you know, this, this part thing and the coding in there is going to be, make it a whole lot easier to do that for you.
Yes.
And then a couple of things too, I wanted, just frankly, under the new business to acknowledge a couple of people too, and again, harping on it, but Darryl, I want to thank you on being so patient, getting all this stuff done. I know it's all due to a lot of us and to Barb for taking literally the bold light of horns and a lot of stuff thrown at you right away and kind of like champion. Thank you for all of that. And then, our volunteers here in this town, and since I moved in October 17th of 2003, that's what I found time and time again, the force of our volunteers, not only the people that live here, our policemen, our firemen, and frankly, all of us who do these events day in and day out, year after year, as volunteers. And we have a sign leading in, or two signs leading into our town for Governor's Cup finalist in the year 2005 and a great dinner that we had at Gulf Vista celebrating our volunteers. I think it's about time that we put ourselves in for that award again because we truly are champions at it. And then something that nobody has brought up, and I don't know, even in economic development, does every, and this is, we are now a college town. GSU, the year 2014, has a first, is the first of a freshman class of a four-year university. They have dormitories and everything now and frankly, we are the only ones around that has enough restaurants and bars, shall I say it, and hotels in this town for some of those incoming freshmen and their families. And I wanted to know if we made a concern and effort to go see their media and make sure that we're showcased in those incoming freshmen. So, our hotels are listed and, you know, listing for all of our restaurants and perhaps a meeting with their media person and president, maybe might be a good time to do that before because they are having an open house for those incoming parents next weekend, a second one, because they already did have a first one. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Nothing else new? Open to the public, non-genius items? Come forward, your name, address, and trade loan due in about three months.
Good evening. I'm Noreen Gorman, mentioned before, library director at Peatown Public Library. I'm hoping that since I started in June, you've seen the difference, at least in the newspapers, W K L, advertising, our programming, what's going on at the library. I hope you've noticed that. We're working towards that. We also have our newsletter, which we've been keeping around town. It's at the post office and docks and here at the village also. Something we started last month is St. Paul's Church has allowed us to have programming there. We had children's program last month. We have another one coming up March 31st. It's an evening storytime at 6:30. Children are welcome to come. We are, of course, and hopefully bring more programming into town. We do have another event coming up that I wanted to mention if I could, please. It's the baseball and sports collection and card program. It's going to be on March 22nd at the library, it's a Saturday at 10:30 in the morning. Michael from Baseball Magazine will be there. He'll be doing appraisal of cards and things and it's sponsored by First Men's Bank. Thank you.
Is that something we can put on our marquee?
If we get the information.
Absolutely. Again, it's gonna be on our calendar. Yeah, I've bid to the library a couple times in the last 45 days and really done a nice job over there.
Thank you, sir.
Great place to go.
Mark and Nancy Lastik, 5640, moral lane. You know, we do everything together. We just want to publicly thank the board and the mayor and attorney Kucheski for processing that letter and making it easy for all of us. We appreciate that a lot.
It'll help our expenses.
Help our expenses come, right?
Well, no.
That's just going higher and higher.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Norv Snow, 25718, Chinnacock, over in Gulf Vista. Just wanted to tell the board about Senate Bill 1043, Main Factory Homeowner Association of Illinois has this bill, it's a relocation bill. It passed the Senate with no days, got to the House. The park owners packed the hearing and said essentially, there's no need for this, no parks have been closed. If they do close, they village in a town and the owners will pitch in, but that's not exactly true. The village of Wheeling right now is trying to close Fox Point up there and get them out of there. Owners go bankrupt, they don't tell anybody. One owner went bankrupt last year on six parks, didn't pay his water bills, didn't pay the bank. They let the parks run down. The relocation bill is $1 a month per unit to the park owners. This will pay if any park is closed by an owner or a village. The cost to move these homes is not cheap. It'd probably cost $15,000 to move it. Then where do we move it to? Just wanted to thank the board for their support. Trustee Holston is looking at his schedule to see if he can go with us. On April 9th, we have a Mohai Rally Day where we go to every office down there and leave all our literature and tell them, you know, how we'd like them to vote on articles. And Mayor Farquhar went with us last year and it's quite impressive to announce that the mayor was with me when we're passing out all our stuff and everything. So, just to let you know, what we're going over there. Thank you.
I'd like to go on record to that too. We've recognized already the people at Gulf Vista for some of the things they did relative to voting, but they do so many other things in the community that took go on notice. They've been heavily involved in the senior citizen program for a number of years. Meals on Wheels program wouldn't exist without Gulf Vista folks and volunteer work that they do along with other people. they do, along with other people in the community. You know, we have a lot of vested interest as a community in Gulf Vista and the people over there because their support is paramount. The Creamery Foundation that I was a member of, a cellular member of, has benefited greatly from their support. They do a lot of volunteer work in a lot of other areas. I mean, quite frankly, seniors have time that people who are still working don't. And we're very fortunate in the Village of Mooney to have a senior community that is absolutely committed to serving, and they do a great job. So we're grateful. I'm absolutely going to plan on being there on April ninth with you, going before I would. Thanks for giving me the dates, Matt, and I'll make sure I'm free now, but...
And Trustee Pop goes every year also.
Norv, I was going to ask if you were mad at me. You're on my notes, I just, I just filled it around there.
Before I was a trustee, I got a ten-year record going, buddy.
Have you tried to leave him yet?
We tried to leave him in Springfield, but they didn't want...
Maybe he wants me.
Just, anybody else? At this time, I want to add a motion to go to executive session for the discussion of matters of litigation.
So...
Okay. Steve Zalas, a horn, throw a couple, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes. Pop? Yes.
Zalas?
Yes.
I haven't heard there have been any action taken on my return, so...